Hello. Hello, Lake County. Hello, everyone. Alright, it's three P M. Uh, February thirteenth. We are going to begin this work session of Lake County Board of County Commissioners. The afternoon session we are embarking upon. We will cover Lake County Government Communication Plan. And I am really excited to dive into some of this because we just have so much. Hopes and dreams for the future of this.
Awesome. I think that we have a lot of hopes and dreams too. So today's a conversation for feedback, it's for you to ask questions. Sammy Shiner, who is our Communications Manager, has joined us via the magic of the internet. Hi Sammy. She's waving enthusiastically back, I can tell. Um, so. The first thing I want to do is talk a little bit about media training. So I want some of that to populate your thoughts and explore some of those ideas brought in there. As we go through our communications plan and as you think about how you want to engage with our community, our media internally and externally with staff and stakeholders.
Are we doing any media training?
We're doing it. Got a fancy little PowerPoint, we're just gonna talk about it.
Yeah, I read it.
Alright, y'all. So. When we think about media training, what we're really hoping to do is give y'all some tools to think about when you engage. Y'all are now community figures. Uh, one of my favorite things about Commissioner Fiedler was like, when I'm in Safeway, if someone comes up to me and talks to me, I need to know what to talk about and what to say. And so that's kind of our goal with media training, to feed that into our communications plan and give y'all ideas for how to talk about and how to engage with people that live here. Oh, hi Chris Lloyd.
I'm definitely future.
You as the board have a lot of power when you have unified communication. You have a shared voice, you are working together, and that is pushing out the message of it. So when we have this unified voice, what we're doing is we. Hey.
I'll let you take over.
Alright, so we are going to.
But I think that that's really important. And so as you have your discussions about what's controversial and what's not, is having that kind of shared vision to push out for the community. So it's speaking as one voice and it's always knowing that the stakeholders are always watching. They always give the anecdote, would you want this on the front page in the newspaper? And that is now your reality. So. When we don't have that power of unified communication, we may build a moment where we have a misaligned messaging. And so we can have some consequences of that that we really want to avoid. When it's not that unified voice, we can have some public distrust. Well, she said, he said, and we don't want that. We can help proliferate some harmful social media rumors. And I think we're all really aware of how social media kind of impacts us at this county, as well as the community. So that's something we need to be really thoughtful about. And then it can also build some divisiveness among community members with that he said, she said. So again, when we really dig into our priorities, when we dig into your vision, when we dig into your mission, let's just make sure that that's consistent so we can build that unified voice around messaging. And then we can support that here as county staff and the various ways that we engage. Focus. So, setting the tone as leaders, be transparent. Elsa gave me a really good word yesterday. She's like, yeah, we need to be vulnerable. We have to show that we are developing and growing and there's an opportunity to improvements of areas. And maybe it's a good idea to expose some of those vulnerabilities, but also, this is what we're doing to grow on that, to mitigate it, to change it, and be more successful in the future. I'm just gonna harp on that being consistent. And then I think it's also really key that you as leaders is being collaborative. If we show a fracture in this board, I think it's okay to disagree. But y'all are our leaders and having that camaraderie and engaging, you're really setting the tone and modeling for the rest of our community. Collaborating with the communications team first, you want to do that because Sammy and I are delightful. But also, we can really help you think about phrasing to make sure that it's a positive affect rather than coming from a deficit mindset. We can help you work on some of the phrasing for that. And we can always make sure that what we're saying to our community through whatever outlet is always tying into those priorities, those goals, and that larger strategic. So that we are building upon our success. And we're building a narrative or an elevator speech that eventually will be the voice of the county and every single staff member as well as our community will know it. So when we talk about organizational behavior, it's three years for a climate change. It's seven years for a culture change. In the time that I've been at the county, just about two years, I've really seen that climate change internally. And I am really focused on pushing that externally and changing the climate of our community. It's gonna take a long time. But if you collaborate with us, if you help us think about this, if you give us the feedback and give us the time, alright, so let's talk about some best practices. First, we hang up with the telemarketers. Um, so anytime you're gonna talk to Finn in the newspaper or somebody else, just let us know. We can always help with that messaging, we can always help with topics. Same thing with the county manager's office, they're here to support that, they're here to guide that. In this, we can really clarify that message and distill it. When we're talking about getting something across to people, three points, that's it. So when we bring in five, six, seven points, you cloud the message. So when you're getting there, you want to talk about something, we're gonna help you refine it, we're gonna help you distill it.
My word salad is too many ingredients.
That's okay. So your word salad is too many ingredients. What's your strategy to help with that?
Use less ingredients? Clarify the message?
It's hopeful, we're speaking with the media.
Well, not to the me- the media.
And I think that we're using media as a broad term. We have to understand that we're in a small community and I guess when we're engaging with external folks, I think that's really what we think about because media could be the newspaper. We can interpret media as our social media channels, we can interpret it as flyers, we can interpret it as a couple different things. So it's a specific term, but kind of take a broad view with it. And we can really help you. Sometimes it's best to have the word salad and then you clean it up. But you need to have word salad with someone before you have word salad with someone who's gonna write it down.
Okay, I think I just did that earlier today, like, hey, how does this look?
Heck, yeah, you did.
Heck, yeah.
That was awesome.
Uh, clarifying the message, stick to the plan. We are talking about these three things today. I want to talk you about the glory of these notes that I have right here. They are written with this fabulous pen and I can turn the page. Well, what about the weather? I'm sorry, we're really here to talk about this. If you'd like to talk about that at a later date, I'd be happy to discuss that. But when we go into a conversation and we don't have a plan, especially with our external stakeholders, we word salad, we rabbit, we go off topic, and we lose the clarity of that message. It's weird to not answer the question, it's weird not to support people when they go off. So it's hard for me to pull back because I want to help people, I want to answer. But when that's not what we're doing, that's not what we're doing today. But thank you so much, I'd love to talk about that later. Uh, and then defer when necessary. If you do not have an answer, there's absolutely nothing wrong with saying, hey, you know, I'm not really sure right now, but let me get back to you. Oh, let me check with this person because they're more knowledgeable about this subject area. Or just saying, this is still developing, we just don't have any answers yet, but we will get back to you. That is such a more powerful statement than making an inference guessing or suggesting. Because if that guess inference or suggestion isn't right, you have created miss or disinformation. Social media. It's present, it's here, it's a big thing in our community. Um, so for better or for worse, we really need to think about our individual online behaviors. And then our hats of our position on like behaviors. Those are two different things, those are separate. It's gonna be important to separate them. It's gonna be really hard. So, when you represent yourself on social media, it's not just yourself. People are gonna see you as a commissioner no matter what, and you are speaking for the county at that point, even if you're not. That's how people are gonna perceive that message. Your words can influence public perception. So how you phrase things, how you frame things, that's really gonna matter. I, even if something totally sucks and I am not optimistic, I always try to phrase it in a positive mindset. Sometimes it's really hard for me because it's a bad day. But I've seen the power of a positive mindset and that's what this community needs. And that's what I'd like to see from all of y'all. And if something doesn't feel right, come talk to us because we'll find that little shiny spot about it. And we'll help you really fall in love with it to sell that idea or that piece of information.
I've left social media.
That's okay, but it's still something you can't ignore.
Me too. It's a lovely place.
Oh, I'm there.
Okay.
You know, I hired people to be there too. Because it's not healthy to be.
It's not, it's.
Why didn't you hire people?
To like, watch the bitch and moans and the what's happening, just the, because I want to know what people are talking about, but I don't want to spend time on Facebook.
Why not do that, but I don't have to hire her, she's just gonna be there for free.
Yeah, Cisco offered.
It's a good business model.
Only when it's like super bad.
Yeah.
Yeah, Cisco offered, but I said, I don't want that in our home.
Yeah.
At all, so that's why I paid somebody. But anyway, I respect that, I wish I had taken part in that way.
You don't have to have social media, but we're gonna talk about some of the things that are popping up on social media. Because we're gonna have to address them. But we have to address them from the county's voice and the county's standpoint as the source of truth. And if we ignore it. So we're not gonna, we are gonna approach it in a tactful and appropriate way. But we can't ignore the rumblings of the community because that is a form of feedback that we do have to address.
Do we have somebody at the county that's monitoring that and?
So this is tough cookies, right? So Leadville Bitch and Moan is a community organizational group. And we're not gonna be responding to it on the county's channel.
Does somebody look at?
I think a lot of people look at it.
Not directly, but like indirectly, can we put out posts that might?
Yep.
Be in the same atmosphere as what has been recently a hot topic on there, but just in a format um, where um, in a, in a non-no comments kind of setup.
So what our goal is, we respond on the county's channels at the source of truth, whatever is that rumor. We built the information package that's factual and we are hoping to build the climate that supporters will repost it on those channels. It's not the right way for the county to be like, hey, so and so, you said this on bitch and moan, check this out. And we link to them, that's not the way that we're gonna do it.
Engage indirectly.
Correct. But so we engage indirectly with facts, with information, and links to more information. And that's how we combat miss and disinformation. It's really unfortunate that we do get supporters on bitch and moan or on our county website, but they're direct messaging us and it's not public. Uh, so we have a lot of good Samaritans that are like, hey, I'm sorry this happened, they shouldn't have said that. And it's beautiful, right? Because we, we're getting a little bit of flack that sucks and it is hurtful. You can't help but internalize it just a little bit. Um, and we really want to motivate people. It is civic engagement. It is being um, aware of our community that hopefully we can galvanize people to combat that for us. But we're gonna put the tools out there for them to do it.
Do we have any, like, we, you know, on the, on the subject of messaging and you get things that aren't awesome. Do we have like a formal complaint system that is effective and like up and running and monitored?
Well, so, I don't call it a complaint because that's not a positive mindset, right? It's an opportunity for improvement.
I'm sorry.
My realness is coming out.
We do have a couple spots in our site for people to provide us with an opportunity, yeah. And I'll show those to you.
But there is, there is a way to, so when um, you'll start to see it when we have the um, quarterly department memos and then you, uh, the second meeting of the month has like the county manager updates in it, um. Those are going with that. But anyway, for folks to file a complaint and also we're working on the changes to that. Now, on, on the website, on the commissioners' page, there's a link that says, you know, meet with a commissioner, right? Those requests currently go to Sandra and I. Um, part of it, yes, is gatekeeping, so if it is, well, I don't know, you know, anybody being like, hey, my land use files before you guys, you guys really should go, it's like, oh, yeah. We don't, we don't see that. Um, and then some of them are other things of just like, hey, where do I get my O W T S on-site wastewater treatment? Uh, subject form. It's like, okay, I can direct staff easily and do that. Um, so we're, anyway, working on a better way to get those things directly to you guys. But also, right, like when complaints come in about something, either, you know, to you guys or to me, right, then that's when I go and I work with staff. Um, coming up with a solution, uh, addressing the issue, getting their side of their story, all that kind of stuff, and then providing that information back to the board. So anyway, is there a formal route to doing that? No. I mean, if somebody on Facebook is, you know, the county uh, didn't do X, Y, or Z and um, I'm pissed, right? Like Sammy will flag that stuff for me or whatever, or directed, or flag it to that department director of like, hey, you guys closed at four thirty when you said five. Alright, so there's something for us to address, right? Does that make sense? Was that helpful?
So, we have a pretty hefty filter there and then it's pretty roundabout, like we don't.
They can also reach out to us directly on the website.
Yeah, yeah. And say, yeah, I mean, you know, I mean, you know, you're at Safeway.
I never get any emails.
I'm waiting.
Nobody emails us.
No, not emailing me.
Oh, yeah, no, I'd be.
Oh, yeah.
You know, emailed us.
Okay.
We're getting emails.
So some people, yeah, some people and it's.
They expected so many more.
I think it's, it's um.
Jeff Carpenter.
Yeah, when we're talking about like, you know, complaints, it depends on like what, you know, somebody sends to you, right? Like, and then it's um, up to me to like work with that department director. I'm like, hey, they're piling and they hit my mailbox.
Oh, like your scrap metal thing.
Right, yes, like that, all of that, so I can help provide those um, that context and that feedback.
Your eyes are open.
Yeah, N D's are closed.
No, that, that's a, that's not.
We're all smiling, our eyes are.
Yeah, we're squinty, but open, it's bright in there.
Um, we get to the Board of County Commissioners page, we have the stuff about your meetings right here. And then this is how to contact a commissioner, this is how to request to meet with a commissioner, this is that.
That's how to request to meet with all of the commissioners. You can request a meeting with each one of us on our individual links.
Yeah.
Yeah, just to be clear.
Is there?
But then, in other areas, um.
Wait, can, can I go, can we go through that request of me individually? I just want to see how that looks for the consumer.
Well, this is going to have all of your contact information. We can build out a request if you want. So this is a widget within the website and it would send you like an email write-up of what the person has requested. So we can build you one out just like this, if you're interested. Um, and we can talk about the fields you want, but just pretty general capture information. Name, email, phone number, kind of what you want to talk about.
Is topic to be discussed have a limit on word count or anything, or could they can go banana cold?
They can write a manifesto.
Alright, sweet.
Uh, so we do have that option, if you're interested, we'd be happy to help. But then, like Elsa was pointing out, this is just your um, bio that has your contact information right here.
I will say, not many counties give out their commissioner's cell phone numbers. So like if you feel like you're being super accessible, most just do emails. I'm waiting for a phone call.
Our phones are all on there now, right now.
Yeah.
And we can turn that off. Um, this is just another widget within the website of how it's built, so we can turn fields on and off. You have chickens?
I know four chickens.
What kind of chickens?
The ones that lay eggs.
I know, but like, what kind are they?
One of them probably have like red things on their faces.
A coop, okay.
One of them has some feathers on his feet.
Okay, so there's about four different breeds that have feet feathers, it's a recessive gene too.
Our neighbors moved away and they had about a thousand pound chicken coop over there and they were like, do you guys want this?
What color eggs?
We get brown, blue, and white.
So blue, you're gonna have an orana.
Okay, blue, very bluish, greenish.
Well, if it's green, it's an Easter egg or. A variant.
They're named, they're.
I'm sorry, there's chickens, I love chickens, okay.
They're named after the ladies in, on that show, The Office, which I've never really watched.
Get it.
Phyllis and Amy or whatever.
So y'all let Sammy and I know kind of how you want this website present set up for contact. We're happy to give you the skills to manipulate the site and we're also happy to do it for you. Um, a lot of departments have kind of a capture form like this as well to get feedback or an opportunity. Yeah, don't complain.
I didn't mind having that over there.
I like giving them some.
Had a few calls. Yeah.
I clicked on, I filled out the request to meeting with the commissioner thing in the beginning. To be like, who is this coming to? And then I got on my personal email, because I've used my personal email on it. I got a copy of it to show that what I had sent in. And then Tim emailed me asking when I'd like to request a meeting to talk to myself. So it goes, I was like, I just wanted to know who's gay.
That filter's pretty loose, bud.
There's other areas that we will talk about in more budget session, but there's other areas for people to provide feedback via the website.
Okay.
If they have.
I was thinking about, it's probably not, I don't know. I was thinking about putting a wooden drop box in front of my office, say, questions, complaints, concerns. A lock on it, anonymous.
So.
Old school.
Sorry, I will also say like a lot of our departments um, have direct ways that you can complain directly to them. Or like DHS just gives you straight to the state, like complain to our regulators directly. Um, and then there's a process, but dictated by the state follow-up to those complaints too, so.
I'm writing those for myself to keep them.
Okay, so I did want to mention the Lake County Government Employee Handbook. We do have a statement about social media that makes it very clear that employees need to separate their Lake County government hat from their personal hat on a social media. Uh, yep, I think that sometime, we're such a small community that we know where people work. And so when you post on social media, especially with something concerning the government, a lot of people are gonna think that you're reporting as an employee. So we do recommend that if staff are posting and it has to do with Lake County government, which they can, they just need to make it very, very clear that they're doing that and it's not necessarily the county's views. And we do recommend some sort of statement reflecting that.
And this, this comes very much into play during election season.
Yep.
So when you are, in the broadest terms possible, when you are on the clock at Lake County Government, you cannot post to social media about anything political or election related. It's a vile federal, it's a violation of federal law. And also, I, Chris can confirm if that includes you guys as elected officials, but Lake County staff during business hours can't be, you know, don't vote for this yahoo, I just got out of a meeting with them. After hours, they can't.
You can't be on county property.
In time.
We can't.
You get, yeah.
On county property campaigning.
Yeah.
And if we were uniformed, we couldn't be in uniform.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's, 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 it extends to any county resources, so not just on county to- time or property, but also um, you can't use county printers and, and telephones and that kind of stuff technically to do it.
No bumper stickers on the county vehicle, got it.
Yeah.
This is a cool one.
Yeah.
Um, so how are we gonna address rumors? And we kind of already talked about this. So, I think going back to the bitch and moan, we're not gonna engage on those channels. We're gonna engage on our channels, we're gonna be factual, we're gonna be timely and it's gonna be relevant information. We're not gonna directly address on those, but we have a plan to address it. And then again, our whole communication strategy is gonna be relevant, timely information and engaging as many stakeholders as we can. If you're gonna see some stuff you don't like, maybe not you, Matt, and Andy, but stay above the fray. Don't feed the trolls, focus on positive engagement, we're gonna help you with that. And then again, defer when necessary. So, I hope y'all think about these things as we go into conversations with all sorts of avenues of communication. And think about these things as we now dive into our Lake County Government twenty twenty-five communications plan. Oh, you're all good. I haven't sat down one time in a year in my office. Ooh, buddy, get bigger. Alright, so this plan is a little bit of accordion, some of it is high level and then we break it down a little bit smaller.
At this point, there's no more skeetering things in marketing.
It's, so, I think one thing we kind of funnily deal with at Lake County Government as we have really cool pictures of the city and you know, the city is in the county. And then if it's, we're really focusing on like images of the county, it's just these like epic sublime landscapes. So we need pictures of humans not on Harrison. You're right.
Oh, yeah.
We took some pretty good photos. So, I think it's really important, this is our executive summary and this is really our guiding principle to get us through our comms plan for twenty twenty-five. But we want to establish clear, consistent, and proactive approach to informing and engaging the public, employees, and key stakeholders. Really to ensure Lake County Government communications are accessible, transparent, and responsive, strengthening public trust and participation. So this is what our goals focus around. We know who our target audiences are. You know, I think that we have to be thoughtful, that we have a diverse fabric of our community. Not all of us receive information in the same way. We are a very strong newspaper community, we have folks without internet, we have folks that don't get the newspaper. So how do we connect with all those? We have a large generational fabric, we have a language fabric. And we're gonna have to find different ways to communicate with these audiences because one way does not serve them all. These are our objectives, increase public awareness, enhance engagement, build trust and transparency, strength in internal communications, and ensure crisis readiness. We have a multi-platform strategy to do that. We really want to focus on proactive messaging that's humanizing Lake County Government and our operations because we are all lovely people here, these are our stories of what the good work we are doing to serve all of you people. And then we really want to um, utilize all of these different platforms and channels. And this is a living document, so it is subject to change throughout the year with y'all's feedback as well as from the community. Because this tool is for y'all and for them. So, this is what Lake County looks like. Our median age is thirty-six point eight, that makes me feel really old. Yeah.
It's a young crowd.
Isn't it?
And rich, ninety-three salary year.
But that's your median household income.
Household combined.
So that could be, and then so our average um, household is two point five, so that could hypothetically be two point five contributing to get to that ninety-three. Yeah, that's not a lot of money in our economy. So, the core functions of our communications team and our comms plan is strategic communication, planning, and processing. That's what we really talked about with that media training. Uh, we want to provide communication support for offices and departments. So we want to have a connection with every single elected office and all of the twenty-seven departments we hear of Lake County Government. We want to ensure that we are engaging with the public because that is our job. That is what we wake up to do, to make sure that our messages are getting out there. We are a part of brand management, showing that we kind of have a coordinated voice. And then we are also serving as your emergency communications, so when. I'm sorry, that's one of our priorities? It's like number five, so you need to slow down. Gosh, uh, also emergency communication. Sammy and I have both been to Public Information Officer Training. We do that in partnership with Claire Hathaway from the Office of Emergency Management. But crisis communication is a little bit different and uh, it's really hard and it's um, it's really intimidating. But we definitely want to be ready for when we're having a bad day, so that we're prepared, so we can have that clear and timely communication. Um, when I first became a baby PIO, like the second week, Tim's like, there's a fire. And I was like, huh, 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 he's like, nope, there's a fire. And I was like, okay. And it's, you want to have trust with the community, you want to know what to say, you want to know what not to say. I'm really confident that the team that we have of PIOs are gonna be able to do that. And I can tell you, my second week, I was not ready and it was the happiest moment of my life when the fire service took over. Excuse me, the US Forest Service, and they're like, we're the PIO now. And I was like, thank you.
Public Information Officers.
Public Information Officer. That's, so um, Danny was serving as the PIO, the Public Information Officer for the Sheriff's Office. Kind of doing the blotters and reporting out on activity in the community. Deanie is phasing out, so Sammy and I are gonna be picking that up. But it's um, it's a different type of reporting and talking about situations than you do in the newspaper or putting out um, a newsflash on the website. And a lot of times you just don't know yet and folks really, really. And a lot of times you just don't know yet and folks really, really wanna know what's happening, what caused the fire, so we're still exploring that, it's under development, as soon as we know, we'll let you know. It's hard. Okay, this is how we want strategic communication planning to go. County manager, offices, that's y'all, and departments feed information to the communications manager and the PIO. Then we work on creating that strategic communications plan, we coordinate with any partners that we need to, whether it's another department or whether it's an external partner like a nonprofit or another governmental agency or jurisdiction within the area. Then we are gonna utilize the appropriate communication channels to hit the target audiences that we wanna connect with. We are going to look at metrics because we can be sending messages out there all day and spending thousands of dollars, but if it's not doing what we want, it's not effective communication.
Who measures metrics?
I'm sorry sir, that's at the end of the plan, you're gonna have to wait.
My apologies ma'am.
Thank you, um and then we get that product, that deliverable to the targeted audiences. So these are our different communication channels that we are currently utilizing. We use the county website and we really, really wanna boost the county websites present. That is probably our most responsive way, us manipulating it and getting out there that we can get to folks. So we, in our website, the module is called the News Flash, that is, let me show you. News and announcements.
Watch your step over there.
Sorry, I'm feeling so antsy, I'm tired.
That's a weird combo.
I know, I don't know why, I'm so sorry.
Don't be, don't bother this.
It's the end of the day, before Valentine's Day, we all have a lot of pressure.
Yes, I'm very nervous about who we're gonna get Valentine's for this one.
Uh oh. Oh, Tim's looking down.
I'm fishing, don't worry, I'm fishing.
I did get Valentine's for everyone here.
You did, and I was like, oh, ooh, zuffered.
And the next year, no good.
Wow.
Unrequited.
I got to feel a lot like, you know, like elementary school.
So.
I'm gonna stay away right after this and get incredible whole Valentine's for everyone. You're gonna go skiing all day tomorrow.
I'm imagining us taking a catch to like the little Valentine.
Oh, we should've made shoeboxes, like.
Next year, next year.
There's always time. So this is the news flash module on our website right here, so it populates chronologically as we put stuff on there or you can view all news. This is our general county one that feeds from all of them, there are some department specific ones. For example, Community Planning and Development does a good job of keeping theirs relevant. Uh but this is kind of an archive as well, so we can go back in time. This is a subscription list for folks on our website that they can do. We do it in English and in Spanish when we can and we are building the capacity to do more of that. So while we're here, this is the community calendar that I think we're all pretty familiar with at this point. But we try, we populated with all of the Board of County Commissioners meetings, all the other statutory boards we have for the county, all of the other advisory boards we have from the county. And then anything community wise that we just kinda wanna do like an FYI, this is here people, we put it on here as well. This is also a subscription list, if you wanna subscribe to it.
And then the opinion about uh the subscription list, right, is like, you do need to go in, you have to create like an account or put your email address in there. Mainly because um you have to consent to your information, your uh your email being used by the county government for you to receive that news.
Yeah.
So we can't be like Google and just scrape the internet for emails and add you, sell you to whoever else, they explain that a lot of it.
You did good job.
Thank you, yeah.
And there's a good enough.
People need to sign up, is the point, right?
There's a good enough process of that to shield us from any malicious like people, like um.
So if someone hops into our website, which is a possibility, we do have some vulnerability protocols in place. But yeah, it could happen and then we could be sending a lot of cat pictures to two hundred people.
Or like the other ones that I've heard of is where they like flood your um requests with like eighteen hundred billion random email addresses and your servers crash because they can't handle the.
So that has.
Like, do we have a little captcha or something that makes sure, where is that, even the real people?
I don't think there's a captcha, but it's it's two factor authentication, so like when you put your credentials in, then you get an email or a text message that you have to verify with.
Okay.
Yeah, what you're suggesting could totally happen and it hasn't happened yet, but um I think as our world becomes increasingly involved in the worldwide web, these things are just gonna happen, it's gonna suck and then we're gonna fix it. And then we're just gonna get ready for it to happen again.
Which is why we have the waiting room on Zoom now, uh cause it used to not have one and anyone can join and we got porn bombed on site in a meeting. Most exciting meeting we've had for a long time.
Yeah, they can put our faces on it. Not suggesting.
Perfect, so we have about thirty different notify me subscription lists, that's way too many. But we need to work with all the different departments, we need to curate it and we need to clean it up to a couple different channels. The largest subscription group is for the Board of County Commissioners. Um, there's like around two hundred and sixtyish people, I believe in that subscription group. So when we get to metrics, that's one of the pieces I'm gonna talk about, we really want that number to go up. We know we have more than two hundred and sixty people interested in Lake County Government, we're gonna work on that. Um, the other high one is emergency notifications, cause Claire does a really good job with that and yeah, that should be one of our lead boards. So we need to clean up, we need to curate, we need to funnel, but we need to make sure we have appropriate subscription lists and then we also need to hopefully migrate subscribers from other ones, just so we have a more comprehensive list. Uh, the Board of County Commissioners meetings, that weekly email that goes out to give folks the notification for the calendar of the agenda, that's built from this notify me. And we need to do more, so we use Facebook, we use Instagram, YouTube is where we put all the recordings of your regular meetings and the work sessions that you choose to record. Sammy's been working really hard on just cleaning up our YouTube. So we recently gave her a software license to Adobe Premiere, so we can do a little bit more with those videos. She disagreed with putting in really rad transitions between agenda items.
Like doing Star Wars white screens and.
Our lots. I'm a guide, I don't like the boss, I facilitate ideas. Um, but we are now putting chapters in them.
Yes, thank you.
We knew we need to, it is a huge lift, Sammy was like, and I was like, I'm sorry, we talked about some kind of code where we're sitting here can hold up a red fly for new agenda items.
Oh, that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Cause if not, you have to listen to the whole meeting.
Oh, we should do whatever makes it easier, I don't want Sammy to be like.
I.
Let's do each other names over and over again.
Right, I mean, when we uh used to do a bunch of filming, we'd always, after every good clip, you'd be like say no right away, like, oh, that's that's one right there, you could like scroll through stuff super fast and when you saw the.
I like that. I like that.
She says it's okay, but I wanna develop a tool if we're gonna do that because she shouldn't spend four hours.
No.
Um.
Without a timestamp, a simple timestamp, so you just.
Well, I think there's a couple things that we can do.
Oh, yeah.
Do, do we see them? Yeah.
Cause she's watching the video to find the breaks in the agenda items. I wanna work with her to see what she wants to do, what will, so they'll take her work, but watching her today, watching yesterday's meeting, I was like.
Yeah, tell us, tell us, Sam, tell us what makes it easier and we'll do that, we will implement that next week.
Excellent, um in addition to the YouTube, uh Adobe Premiere is a little bit more powerful as software. So it can, so YouTube can generate captions. It takes about six months to get a video with captions on it, it's a really long time, Adobe Premiere is a little bit faster, so we have, they call it subtitles instead. Um and it will automatically generate in other languages as well, so it'll probably put up Spanish, knowing that it's probably about eighty five, eighty six percent.
Accurate.
It it's accurate, it just sounds weird.
If I'm up here saying like, the cheese is old and moldy.
Yeah, it's gonna translate that.
For people who don't speak English, I'm gonna.
Well, so it'll translate that, but idiomatic expressions like um, what's a good, what's a good idiomatic? Like, I'm the big cheese, so like, we know what that means, it means you're the boss, but that that doesn't translate.
Yeah. Figures of speech do not translate.
Exactly, but we all know that and it's gonna be okay enough and if we're talking about access, we're talking about accessibility. This is really low hanging fruit, cause we're asking the robots to do it and it's, of course, we can do it.
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, we do.
There's also um a game sometimes that staff likes to play.
Oh, yeah.
So when I lose my poker face, they screenshot me.
Yeah. Uh huh.
When the board does something and I uh, yeah.
Can you keep your mouth? Stop, that's really cute.
Dude. It is, so just, you know.
It's a fun game.
Know you're being recorded.
So we do, we, we have a LinkedIn, we haven't fully engaged on that, so we really have to measure like what we would use that for.
Right, got it.
Uh flyers, paper flyers are always gonna be a thing, people like to make them and hang them up. My fun game with flyers is to find out of date ones, if you go to the front window, there are many of them and I like to see how long they're gonna stay.
Yes.
So I beg, if we create a flyer, we take that flyer down. Also, mailers have been a powerful tool for us, we did one last year to introduce the Summit Community Cares Clinic to folks. It was this really cute postcard, English on one side, Spanish on the other. I think it was really successful because we had a really high um engagement with the change from Human Services and Public Health being in two different locations to moving to Highway twenty four along with the Summit Community Cares Clinic. So that's a tool this year, we should start to think about how we wanna use it. Uh, newspaper, so we do provide press releases to the newspaper that we draft, then sometimes picks up stories from us from the county. We provide all of our public notices there, so last year we had fifty news stories drafted or forty nine, Sammy gave me the number this morning. We're really gonna start to follow those, just to see what the sentiment was in the newspaper, did the county do something really rad? Or is there an opportunity for them to grow a project in something radder?
Oh, you're saying that like we were featured in a news article, not that we featured a news article.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay, got it.
But we really want to appropriately influence them as best as we can. Uh, town halls and events, we have all sorts of events and programming throughout our various different departments. We really want to push those, share those, especially our really cool ones. Did you know that the Senior Center is hosting a dance tomorrow for Valentine's Day?
Yes. I asked if I could go.
Not at the University?
No, I was told that I was too young and I said I've had shingles and that didn't get me in. Um, but that's a really a cool event that we should publicize, also Sebastian is DJing, so I would actually like to go just to see.
Stop it.
Yep, I was like, do you need some glow lights, cause I can help.
Wait, there's a rave at the Senior Center?
There very well could be and this is how we start rumors.
Right, a rave, not too dark, tripping hazard.
Uh, town halls is a tool that we have used in the past. So Claire, when she was kind of in the executive admin role, she helped organize them at the different um communities within Lake County, it, you know, lukewarm, but it always takes takes time to build something and trust and relationships. We did host a town hall when it was warm outside, it was very hot, um with language access in our community justice work. So that's something to think about too, I think it really dovetails nicely with priorities and goals and strategic plans. So as we get to there, we can talk about what events and programming that we can do to pull folks in, so you get that kind of contact and you get to hear their voice and you get to hear theirs.
Could we like tie it into something like Movies in the Park, like, oh, Movies in the Park, we're gonna start with a thirty minute Commissioners
Sure, so.
state of the, state of the county thing and then you'll get your movie.
The.
Oh my god.
So the public library does a, does do a programming event about that.
We can make anything not boring, I mean, like, think about these like
Shout a corny to dance.
Of this sixty four counties that people could watch videos of Commissioners meetings in the state, we've gotta be in the top half of entertainment value.
We should, you guys competition is what you're saying and we should win. Cause I'm here for that, yeah, the difference of competition.
Oh, is it a trophy?
Commissioners talent show.
So the renovation needs to include like a disco ball and.
Yes. Ready.
There would be a dance.
Um.
Wouldn't vote no.
Oh, what?
You guys can dance, I don't think.
Like you said, you wouldn't vote no.
Oh, I was, I'm not gonna dance, whatever the rules.
Oh.
I would dance purely for the entertainment factor of the community and.
If it makes you wanna see more, I'm.
My, my, thanks, it's good. Game during campaign season, save that one.
Okay.
Um, the library does something like that, I think with Movies in the Park, it's gonna be a really powerful tool to do a shared programming with someone else that's already doing and capitalizing on that.
Yeah.
Um, as an educator, I hate movie showings, cause you have to see public performance rights and to show a movie for the public could be wicked expensive. Like to show a movie can simply be five grand. Just think about that.
So much a movie.
But they already do a lot of that, they pay that much every time they do Movies in the Park.
No, it could be like a hundred fifty, like it depends on the movie.
So. It.
Yeah.
It depends on the movie.
If you're not charging admission, I think it's different too.
Nope, it's public performance, it's copyright man.
It's a nonprofit, like the library, but the library can buy it through
Swank.
Lake County Community Fund. So they can purchase it, I only know this, cause I tried, I showed movies at Freight and we, and yes, Swank is one of the two you can purchase them from. So nonprofit can purchase movies for like half the price. And it ranges everywhere from seventy five bucks for like an old Charlie Chaplin movie to
Seventy five hundred.
thousands of dollars for wow.
And the price can change, one year I showed Disney's Coco for three hundred, one year I showed it for fifteen hundred.
Yeah.
So it's intellectual property is wild, if you'd like to have a beer and talk about it, I missed my calling.
Yeah.
And there it is, so for the, the town halls, like um, you know, what we had done was trying to bring the Commissioners to the community, so we did one down in Twin Lakes, we did one at the Lake Forest Community. Mountain Bat, Mountain View, um then one in Leadville, so think about that, right, when you think about community engagement.
Yeah.
Twin Lakes is always happy to host us, um but also like for our events, right? The fly-ins at the airport, all of our parades, um we have a very engaged federal representative, Representative Pedersen comes to all of our parades. It's real awkward when it's.
And Julie.
And why, and Julie, yes, and and Julie is the speaker, but it's very awkward when uh Brittany comes, she's like, hey, we're the Commissioners, I'm like, I don't know.
And Julie.
Oh, did you guys get the email about that on the eighteenth? She's gonna be at the library.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
But hey, that might just be Justin with his office hours.
Oh, her, her people.
Yes.
She's not coming.
She's, yeah, but.
She's had a baby.
But just thinking about, just thinking about those events, right, so now that you are in this role of the Commissioner, like like, I don't really wanna do the boom days parade, it is a blast, um you should. We won, yes, um we won last year, thanks to Liz's help, um but those those kind of things for people in the community actually like seeing you walk down the avenue is actually very important, um and they can live.
Yeah. So I mentioned this to Elsa, like the town hall, we did a lot of work to do about language access, we had one Commissioner show up and like, this is y'all's work. We, this was the vision of the board, this is the priority to make sure that we had equitable access to county government, they don't show up and it's like dad didn't come to the soccer game again, um, you know.
Yeah, that really.
It is, so.
But it's not that you guys have to be at everything, but it is definitely great, I mean, it's a huge win to have one Commissioner, but like getting all three of you at things
Yep.
is a big win.
Yeah.
Is, and it shows, you know, that you're showing up for your priorities or things that staff have worked on.
Um, is there situations where it's like, we show up at the beginning, say hi, resume, you know, and then
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes.
Kiss a few babies.
Yes.
Exactly.
Uh huh.
And we'll help y'all navigate that.
Yeah, please.
Um, so Everbridge is our emergency alert system, we do an Evergreen quarterly campaign to get more and more people signed up. We um, when staff come onboard, we get them an Everbridge, because sometimes we have gas leaks and other fun stuff that happens. But we really wanna push this with the community as well, cause this is our emergency or crisis communication or just they're like, hey, heads up, this is going on.
And that is Lake Counties and then there is um what's it called, um then there's the the super one that dispatch has that we're paying everybody, um
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
What's it called, the email was a mistake.
So I would wanna practice. It's like. But I don't know today.
Yeah. But anyway, but there's also that one, so you know, Amber Alerts, Silver Alerts, those kind of things, or like with if if Everbridge wasn't as effective in getting something out for a fast moving wildfire, we can do the the super one that pings every cellphone within our jurisdiction.
We cannot devalue the power of word of mouth, when you look at information seeking behavior studies, which are fascinating, we prefer hearing information from somebody that we know. So if somebody that you know doesn't have the right information, they're proliferating and circling it. So when we can get the right messages out there, that factual information, that is the most powerful tool that we can do to connect our community.
And I will add on that one, do you like on this?
I do. Go ahead, there you go.
It is, it is, uh it is just very, very helpful, right, especially like word of mouth from the Commissioners is very important, but that's why, right, like your community updates at the beginning of the regular meetings or check-ins with me or other staff on things or or the board, right, telling your board members yeah, I met with this person, we talked about this, like, interesting idea, like, but it's important to have that feedback loop um and not keeping things like close, close to your chest, cause then other times like I can be going merrily along my way and be like, oh, I didn't realize. I can be going merrily along my way and be like, oh, I didn't realize we weren't doing that anymore.
I watched The Social Dilemma this weekend, it's such a good documentary, it's about power of social media. And how it's designed and what the actual product is that's being sold and it's actually like our behavior is what is being mined. But one of the, one of the interesting facts was that. It um false information spreads six times faster than true information on social media. Which was really wild, I think that's exponential, I don't know how you fight that.
And who decides what's false and what's true?
Well, good question, but we do, there's like.
Trusted news source?
Trusted news source.
I'm just kidding, that's not, who gets to arbitrate the truth, but.
That truth is really hard, cuz it's based on perception or perception builds our worldview, our worldviews are different.
Perception, that's a truth.
Um and we see information.
I'm just, I'm saying like pizza gate, where there was like this under this thought that remember those.
Yeah.
People thought that like there was a pedophile ring in the basement of a of a pizza chain in DC.
Yeah.
And somebody went with a gun, because somebody said that there was a pedophile ring in this pizza restaurant.
Yeah, killed the owner or something.
Shot somebody, nobody died, but um like that's.
Yeah. Yeah. He was just killed by the police.
That's false information and that's spread really fast, so that's what I'm talking about, like false information.
True would be false. Yeah. I hear you.
I hear you.
You find it through education and information literacy as a critical skill, thank you. Uh my dissertation you can find on Google Scholar, it's very informative, uh and then finally networking, right, and that's a piece of word of mouth, but creating those connections, creating those partnerships. Building those rapport internally and externally, it's so valuable when we're having bad days. Alright, so there, this is a nineteen page plan, um we talk about our different priorities, which are right here and then we go to different strategies. These are our tactics to meet those and then we finally go into metrics, I know that we're kind of getting into the end of the day, but I want you to see how this document is developed. I would like to look at the priorities with y'all, just to make sure that we're, this is your moment for feedback? Well, actually, any moment is your moment for feedback, but right now it'll be a really helpful minute for Sam and I to know that. So we want to help lead strategic communication efforts, so that's working directly with the board, county manager's office, staff and partners to ensure communication and outreach efforts, objectives and outcomes. Aligned with our strategic goals and priorities, so y'all are really gonna be focusing on that next week and once we know that, we can really build out around this. We have been focusing on the priorities of the previous commissioners, um and I think it's gonna be really helpful. For everybody, including our community, to kind of know where we're going next and what is holding that high place in our focus.
And then North Star is gonna be very, very important for the leadership at uh at the county, if you like the organization, but then.
North Star, yep.
Development of the marketing plan upon these things, um.
Yeah, these are like communication strategies.
These are our priorities and then we'll talk about our strategies, uh we just wanna make sure that our priorities are really kind of driving with y'all. Um we wanna provide open and timely communication, we have been a little bit reactive instead of pro proactive, we wanna switch that paradigm. We wanna create opportunities for effective stakeholder participation and collaboration, it's not a one way conversation, it is two way, so we wanna create constructive feedback loops. We already talked about that a little bit with how people can provide opportunities for improvement with you all. We wanna ensure that we have a well informed community, it's gonna be hard, but we are ready to meet that challenge. We wanna strengthen our crisis communication and preparedness, we wanna reinforce brand identity.
Okay, that's our goal this one.
Yeah, but you can, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Now, this was, okay, so when I very first started, we had like a pixelated image of Yellow Man as the seal, this was the first business card I was given. And I was like, I don't want the glossy, I don't, um so I.
He's so cute.
Yeah, um.
I like three different fonts, right?
Uh huh, so we've, we have worked very hard to create a brand and a brand identity, um you know, like. It's so anything from our our templates, our PowerPoint presentations, all of that kind of stuff, but those are very important to. To reinforce our brand and actually have a brand, something that we can stand behind and be proud, so for a while with the old board, I worked with them and Ned on um.
He's like my dog?
No, Ned Ned Warner, uh updating the seal of Lake County. Um and then we went through that process, then we kind of realized like, oh, you know what, like. Yellow Man is Lake County, a little different, mining is here, um if rumor, rumor hazard, if you talk to Howard Tritt, um this came from uh. An evening uh at the Hat, um so.
This was scribbled on a napkin at the Hat.
Yeah, Yellow Man, yeah, it's scribbled on a napkin at the Hat, so.
Oh.
Would it be copyright infringement if I had one that had um Curious George and the yellow shirt?
Oh, a hundred percent it would, so you could, so parody is protect, parodies are protected under copyright law, but I think that's too tight.
You're sorry tangent, my bad.
Yeah, yeah, but I just, I just wanted you guys to know, we've gone through a journey with the brand, but we did, it's kind of why we landed with Yellow Man, like alright, that's. Weird, no town room, that's cool.
Double down on Yellow Man.
Double down on Yellow Man, um and that's where these lovely polos came from, um.
He loves the polos.
I love the polos.
I did not get one, except I don't want one.
I never, mine it's brand new, do you want it?
I know, that's a yo.
I have one too, I have one too.
Do you want, better than seeing at the thrift store.
So.
Yeah, I'm selling mine, trying to get permission on it, community friends, baby.
It has been a journey with brand identity, I think it gives us maturity, it gives us a level of professionalism, but I think the most important people is that visual acquisition. The fastest way to acquire information is visually, that's why children spend their pictures, right, cuz they can take that in right away. And I'm starting to see that when we create something, automatically I know it's like county government because of the colors, because of the fonts, because of the format. And that lends us credence, trust and power, so it's really important that we double down on that as we move into this venture. Of branding and sharing a message with the people that we serve. Um.
Sure, this is current of the calendar of Yellow Men.
Yellow people.
Yellow people.
They're my favorite thing ever.
Here's Tim's keepsake back.
Um and then our last priority is really to provide measures of progress and measures of success.
On reverse, right.
So I'm happy to drill down with any of these seven priorities with you, but if you wanna look at one right now and kind of how we have it set up, I think that might um save six hours.
The well informed community to me, it's impo, oh, are we doing that or no?
Oh.
No, we're not?
Well, yes, so I'm gonna go to the well informed community section.
Okay, cool, under strategies.
Yeah, strategies and tactics. Alright, so we wanna keep the community involved and informed, public engagement.
Yes.
So this is kind of our statement of how we're going to do that strategy, we're gonna ensure that community remains remains well informed by delivering clear, accessible and timely information about county services, policies and initiatives. We are gonna prioritize public safety by providing accurate and up to date emergency communications through multiple channels, ensuring residents receive critical information before, during and after emergencies. Strengthening public trust by maintain maintaining transparency, proactively addressing misinformation and fostering two way communication that encourages community engagement and feedback. So that is our strategy, these are the tactics that we are going to work to employ throughout twenty twenty five and beyond, so. P I O is on our forefront of our mind, um but enhancing emergency readiness communications, so last time we really ran into. We have this in English or we don't have it in Spanish or we don't have the turnkey language to support an emergency closure, an evacuation or severe weather. So then we couldn't put it out timely and it was no longer super relevant, so what we have done is we've worked to draft kind of templates and write ups for all of the likely scenarios that we're gonna encounter. We're gonna get a severe storm, we know that, and so now we have that in place both in English and Spanish, so we can get it out in a timely manner. With that, we are going to test our communication systems, make sure all of our plans are effective, cuz when we are having something that's not going well, that's not the time to figure something out. And again, Claire in emergency management has really been our partner in that. So expand community access to county information. Develop a user friendly online hub with updates on county services, projects and policies, so we are really looking at. It's kind of hard because when we look at our website, we have over six hundred pages.
And they're all blue and black.
So that's our, so we don't have a choice.
I know, I'm just saying that like I get the accessibility stuff that we had to translate everything into.
Oh, no, we we don't have a choice, that is the skin of our website made by our content creator and we cannot change it.
We can't make something bold or make something a different color, not, no, just um just words a different color, not, the, I get what our brand is.
Nope. Oh, no, um so if you're referencing like this, no, we we can't change that.
Why not?
Cuz.
Cuz it's a a heading.
It's in the code of the actual website we're paying for.
Uh huh, and we would have to pay probably anywhere from three to five thousand dollars to get that changed.
Oh, my gosh.
It's really frustrating. We are not at a level of maturity where we can host and build our own website, we would need a dedicated web content manager that has the knowledge, skills and expertise.
Yeah. Yeah.
This website is a container that anyone can edit and.
Okay.
Yeah.
Gonna change the county's website.
My, these are the cards, these are the cards without, I'm just playing as best as I can.
Oh. But y'all, we don't look like this.
Whoa, this is like.
Old west.
Yeah.
Nineties.
And this is actually updated from the summer.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, fantastic, oh.
Oh, that, oh, that's.
Wow.
They they have two different blues, right? It's a Sam.
That's not fair, that's their, that's their uh tourism page.
Yeah, that's cheating.
They have a lot more money to work with. Wow, that's really wild, okay.
Um so our website previously was legacy, it was at a moment that Civic Plus, which when you start looking at. County and government websites, Civic is the main purveyor of that content, they have about five different themes, you select one of them, they transfer your site. And then these are all text box that you can edit, but the rest of it you cannot change, so even we want to change our little icons right here, cuz we wanna add one for Spanish.
Yeah, yeah.
It's about three thousand dollars just to do that, so it's really a predatory publishing style.
How did we get that green under our department?
Green, ah yes, um.
I don't wanna get it, oh, sure.
Oh, green, oh, this.
That must be a different heading.
Yeah.
That accidentally is green.
And we do need to keep those headings, and you mentioned why, because of accessibility, um so I think that that is something that we can dream about.
Yeah. Let's keep dreaming, okay.
Perfect.
Sorry, go back to the strategy, I don't need to do real ass.
Um service projects and policies, how are we gonna do that with our website effectively, cuz right now we're too spread out, so we're really exploring ideas for that. Uh we know that we can use a traditional mix of digital outreach as long as with paper, newsletters, social media, towns, halls to do that. And then we need to make sure that it's presented in plain language and available in multiple languages when appropriate, so the big move, which I'll talk about this now, to expand community access for board of county commissioners. Uh since I've started, we've been gently working on pieces to be a little bit more timely about how we build agendas, how we get packet items and how we get items ready and posted. Right now, so it has been a journey and it has been a lot of work, but we're literally posting. Twenty five hours before we need to, um and later today, we are going to send out this lovely little memo. To all of our staff and I have been socializing this idea with I think folks that it's gonna be a little bit of a pinch point to, to make sure um that we can achieve this. But going forward for our March eighteenth regular meeting, we are going to ask anybody submitting an agenda item that they're doing it two weeks ahead of time. So with that, we are asking them to submit the agenda item with their agenda language, the memo to support that and any of their packet items. It seems simple, right, but this is gonna profoundly change kind of the pacing and our goal is to get the agenda along with just the memo pub- published one week before the meeting.
Yeah, and so, alright, so part of this, right, is um. Part of the organizational change we've done over the past couple of years is really like focusing on planning, right? Especially for like your next year's budget, like department directors should already be working on next year's budget and understanding, especially once they get the board's priorities, right? Understanding what they can do with that, um but then even more importantly, like what are those long range financial plans? Part of that also then is is as we work through our workflows, right, like. You know, there are time, time guilty of it, um there are things where I'm like, I didn't talk to anybody about putting that on the agenda, I need to start the agenda. But you know, if you're working on a contract or a PSA or something like that, you've been working on it for a while. So you should be able, so this also will help with the attorney's office on getting there, you know, helping with their timeline, so things aren't rushed and things like that. And it'll also just like really help with like that yearly planning process, um. So this is, this is gonna be a big deal, it's gonna be a big disruption, but I think it's a very important one to get all of uh department directors and their staff to pay attention to this. One, you know, so we can provide this information to the public in a more timely fashion, so people can read it, understand it, follow that. But then also getting it to you guys ahead of time, so you have the time to read it, ask questions, that kind of stuff, so you're better prepared for the decision making meetings.
Yeah, that is huge, cuz I think I've already looked at agendas for decision meetings and not found stuff that was on there and I'm like, I don't know anything about this.
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're working very hard on doing that, so for the public posting, we probably won't be able, you know, like the PSA language might not be done yet. But at least the memo from the department should be ready and that is what we will post publicly, so the public will see that as well, um. And then as we get those materials, we'll get them into the packet, but the goal is.
So what.
So number two is we're gonna get, or you guys are gonna review it a week before.
You. Yep, so just like you've been doing the calendar and agenda review, so let's go through March, cuz that's when this show starts, so when we look at March, everything is gonna be due by. The third, which is right here, but when I go, oh, so it's gonna be due by March third. Everything for the March eighteenth meeting, which is your regular, so your decision making will be due March third, you will go over it in the regular meeting on the fourth. It is going to be finalized on the fifth, sending it back out to anybody that's on the agenda, hey, confirming that this is a language, do you see any typos? Here's your calendar invite to know that you have your ticket to ride and come to this fantastic meeting. Get it all ready all here and then it's gonna be published for public consumption on the eleventh along with that memo, so it has an interpretive item, so it's still. In that plain language that people can understand what it actually is and then we will have the extravaganza on the eighteenth. So that's the timeline that we're looking at, we have one more building block to this plan, which is finally, which will be building to the whole packet. But with change management, slow incremental reinforce and so. I don't know, this is kind of a momentous and occasion, a big deal that we're finally at the moment we can do this, it's something for us to celebrate internally, um. I do think it's gonna be a little bit rocky for the first two months, so give people some grace, we will as well.
Yeah. Yeah.
But y'all, this is awesome, um.
Right, and the biggest, I I mean, I think the biggest challenge will be aside from people not planning and being prepared, which I'm I'm guilty of as well, um. Will be with um planning commission programs, perfect.
Already talked to him. Done.
Good.
Me, Cece got planned, we can do it.
Good.
Um.
Thank you.
You're welcome, and so I did put in some language for an exception, we know something's gonna happen, we know there's gonna be a special, cuz I think that's where people are gonna be like, huh huh huh. We know what's gonna happen, we're planning for it, but we are not gonna plan for you not planning, so.
It's the expectation.
Yeah.
It's gonna be the expectation, yeah.
So I think that's a big part of this piece right here. And then we wanna strengthen public trust through transparency and engagement by pri- prioritizing proactive communication by addressing potential misinformation. We wanna really build those platforms for two way communication, we have conducted some successful surveys, we have gotten a pretty good sample return to us. And we really wanna galvanize that and capitalize on that success to keep that going.
Um not to be addressed during this training, but there are some things that we we have requests as the board that we would like to see some changes.
Yeah.
When can we talk about that stuff?
Well.
Remember you?
Yeah, so you're, we're more than welcome to talk about that right now, um.
We go back, go back, so I'm under this section.
Mm-hmm.
This, some of the things to add to this feedback time, I would love, um. I want us to walk the line better for like communication versus propaganda.
Ooh.
Like we were talking about the other day.
Yeah.
The vulnerability and acknowledging mistakes, acknowledging.
Yeah. What.
Areas of improvement. I think that's really important to me. You can't build trust if you're not also taking accountability for what's not going wrong.
So.
Is that in a different section?
Yes, no. Um. Oh cool. So when we look at priority two that provide open and timely communication, that open communication is kind of what I'm thinking about for that vulnerability. Um so we do have language access in here. We do have looking at developing an annual calendar for how we communicate, because there are more pertinent times. We should talk about emergency preparedness in emergency preparedness month. We should talk the budget in October. Um I had a chat with Candace, it was absolutely lovely. We need to talk about Lake County government and our finances through financing and accounting and those two different lenses. Uh I found this municipality in California that did a citizen's guide to county finances and budgeting. Fascinating, riveting, very helpful for me to take that information as a layperson and then translate it back into this complex works that I've been doing in partnership with them. So absolutely, what you're talking about of where we need to grow, I have some ideas from that conversation in looking about how we have managed this. Right now, our big tool for talking about services in our budget is our annual budget book. We are on year three. So we're a baby. And I relate to Elsa, I am so proud of this budget book. It is the best one we've did, did, done. Best one we've done.
Done, did.
The best one we've done, did. And the cool thing about it is we built a really strong platform that we don't have to change next year. So we don't have to create a fresh book. You know, of course, we're gonna have to update it, but the hard work is in there.
Mm-hmm.
But it's a sixty-page chunky document. It's not interesting.
Yeah, well, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about like when. When DHS is turning people away and the community is. I'm not talking about now, sorry, was turning people away and the community was being seriously harmed. And there's a lot of misinformation and we're trying to call it out. I think we have made huge strides, especially thanks to Lauren. And I want us to be able to say, hey, we are so sorry about that.
Yeah.
That was fucked up. And here's what we're doing to make it better, and here's what we're hoping to do.
Get better in the future.
Better in the future. That's the kind of vulnerability I'm also talking about, that I wanna make sure, that it's important to me that we're saying. We can't just be like, it's all good.
You're right.
Yeah.
And I agree with that, and we have to know about it, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Um going back to this check-in machine.
Yeah.
If this is not being fed.
Mm-hmm.
We can't get to here.
Totally.
So kind of that feedback loop and connection process, we talked about, I don't know if y'all have talked about it, or if it was just brought up today, but like. Along with the calendar and the agenda review, just doing a coms check-in too at that point in time.
Yes.
I, you know, if we wanna do it bi-weekly or monthly, we can play with that to see what the need is, so we can meet it.
Yeah. Nice.
Um but also paired with that, with that open communication and connection, this is something that has been developing. But really meeting with offices and departments to discuss the major issues and opportunities. This is part of that proactive versus reactive. Comms is a relatively new position for the county, so we need to develop that. And so meeting with the department heads, meeting with y'all is really gonna help us build that flow, so we can make this communications machine work like we envision it.
Did you go much further beyond like our weekly check or bi-weekly check-in? Into like what the the end goal of that was, what we kinda had in mind, was like a commissioner's corner where we get to put out a statement to the public.
So we have a couple of different options, um.
And hold, let me real quick just say, like. It sounds like you're busy. It sounds like you got a lot on your plate. You're trying to evolve this thing, turn this, you know, new page with. So if you can find something that seems the lowest priority, lowest rung on the ladder, that you're like, okay, we might not need need to put so much into this.
Thank you. Uh so. And this is your feedback too, but we've kind of, so you've said a couple of things that I wanna address. So our implementation plan, we kinda have high priority, we have medium priority. Y'all are gonna help us shape this to make sure that we are on the target to get what you need. Um you sir mentioned. So we have different options of how you wanna do this and the frequency of how you wanna do it. So we have been doing a quarterly one-page in the newspaper. Addressing priorities. This is about nine hundred dollars to do this, just so you have that in context. You know, half-page, half the price, letter to the editor. So there's many different pathways. It's how y'all wanna do it. My encouragement is just you gotta be consistent. If you're gonna do it. You gotta do it and it can't die off, or else it loses its power.
Yeah.
Cool.
Yeah.
Great.
What are you thinking, like a once a month? Maybe quarter page, each of you take a turn, commissioner's corner, write what's going on type of thing?
We we should talk about that, like the nuts and bolts of it, you know, I think like we've just kinda planted the seed thus far that we're all on the same page.
Oh.
We want to have this, we wanna offer this out to the community.
Mm-hmm.
The frequency, the whether it's a unified message. Or it's a, as a board, or it's each of us have a paragraph in a blurb, you know, um but you know, newspaper. On the county Facebook page, the, you know, I would, I would feel like twice a month would be cool, but like that's.
Newsflash, yeah. That's a lot of work.
Okay, once a month.
Yep.
Down for, I'm down for.
It depends on, you know, like how, right, like what, um.
It depends on the amount of work.
Right.
I think too, it's really like, so what do the individual commissioners, but then also what does the board, what do you guys want to communicate out? You wanna talk about the P card policy? Alright, um do you wanna talk about your reflections a month in, being commissioners? Um you know, all of those those kind of things. So you need to, I would just suggest like, so when we started doing these quarterly ones, right? It's really like gathering the information from folks, again, planning for that next quarter. What are we gonna show up? What are we gonna talk about? Um what the community will care about? So I've just replanted, we're planting the seed back with you guys of like, so if you wanna come up with with an outline for monthly things. Great, um but you know, blog post, commissioner's corner, however, however you wanna frame it. Um but what are, you know. What are those things? Or if you're, or if you're gonna task it off to like, okay, um February, Andy's gonna write it. And then Samuel will work on it with him next month. Elsa's gonna write it, next month Matt's gonna write it. Uh if you wanna chunk up the work that way, um.
And so the question is, what is the right channel for that? You know, should we switch to, should we build a capacity for a newsletter that we build internally? Should we use our new flash, news flashes in our subscription list? Do we wanna use the newspaper? I think that they're hitting different audiences, so that exposure is really good. Um and what I would suggest is like, let's get through next week and then let's circle back with another work session to see how you're feeling. So we can kind of identify the pacing, help y'all make sure that you have the content that you want, and then we can build the scaffolding and structure to make sure that happens.
Are we really gonna dive into this next week?
You're gonna.
Well, we're gonna visit in Salida next week.
You're gonna dive into priorities, you're gonna drive into your Nostar.
That's why I asked.
Yeah, like, but that's where, that's where the, why the retreat is so important. So we we can talk about comms all day long.
Right.
Doesn't matter if I don't know what the board's priorities are.
Right.
And that's where you've seen for the past couple of years, I could never get out of the past board. I'm like, I understand your priorities and I understand your priorities and I understand your priorities.
But as a board.
What are the board's priorities?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
To drive forward work at the county, um and communications. So it's not gonna be like perhaps like a deep dive into comms. But it will be that deep dive into the priorities, which is then going to inform and reinforce this and how you guys want to.
Deep dive. Yeah.
Yep.
And what you guys want to communicate out, right?
So coming back from Salida, will be a better time for us to express our priorities.
Well, you, but after that, you should have, the board should have their priorities. Um uh whatever, choose number five, right? So these are your priorities for twenty twenty-five, twenty-six. Um or you know, longer range plans, right, for the community, what the board wants to focus on. Um so then from there, right, we can act, I can actually like work with and direct staff on that as we talk about budget development, project development, all of these things, being like. This is not a priority anymore. This is the board's priority, this is what we're gonna work on. And then that gives you guys the tool of like, so this is the board's priorities, this is why we're focusing on. X, Y, or Z. Um so it gives you guys your own talking points as well.
Leslie, I also might be mad at you for saying this, but I feel like we also need a little bit of flexibility in comms of like what's going on, right?
Yeah.
We might do a work session with people or like, this is a big deal. Feel like we each need to write something in the paper about our perspective on this and like go from there, or. You approve something at a regular meeting and feel like there's just not a whole lot of understanding from the community deal about what contract you approved. We can each do a, like a Facebook post. So I don't know if we need like, maybe we try and do once a month and then have some flexibility to you, I'll give us direction of. Feel like we need to gauge, engage on this floor, and that's what could be like our check-ins, like you telling us how we direct staff to help you communicate with the community. I don't know, is that, is that what you were thinking here?
Yeah, like I I feel like if we put it through too many channels and too many filters, we've lost our voice. It becomes something different than what we intended to say. It becomes this. Marketing, not.
Propaganda.
Yeah, and I. What I'd like to be able to do is just to pop the community using our voice. Obviously with someone being like. That, you can't say, that's, you know, you didn't intentionally mean to insult people, but that's insulting, or you know, things like someone.
Yeah.
Check in to make sure we're not sticking our foot in our mouth, but like.
No, to me, that's also what it is, but so it is not sticking your foot in your mouth, maybe helping refine, but we don't wanna alter your voice. I think that that's really important. There's an authenticity. And people can tell when a robot wrote it, or they can tell when Commissioner Thark wrote it, or Commissioner Lee or Commissioner Bullock.
Yeah.
So we don't wanna remove that in any way. You are in your positions for a reason, and we wanna celebrate that, and we want your perspective out there. You know, when we know your priorities though, we could be like, hey, maybe we're like a good idea to add that too. Cause we just wanna build that and we really wanna reinforce it, especially that positive momentum and positive mindset for the people that we serve. So that's where we're at. There's tons of flexibility, you know. But we do know, so we do know that if we don't utilize a channel, it kind of stagnates and it kind of like disappears. So then when we do wanna use it again, it's hard to resurrect. So there is flexibility. We can put information on our various channels when we need to. I just wanna help think about what we can also do sustainably. If you're gonna do a corner. There needs to be a cadence and a frequency to it.
Yeah, I understand that. I'm not afraid of, you know, I'm not afraid of the work, it's more of like.
Yeah.
I get ideas sometimes that are not, you know, sound great in my head and people are like.
Yeah.
You know, so it's like, I wanna make sure that how this is, I'm visualizing this in my head, I'm not, you know, thinking. Too far out in specific direction. I wanna make sure I honor these guys and what they feel like they wanna do.
Yeah.
And hopefully enhance what, you know, public engagement, which is listed so many times in this, that it's, it's.
Well, I wonder, I mean personally, if we're meeting your. Your feedback, what, what are, are you getting, you getting your feedback out that you want us to work on? Right, so if I, I guess in my mind, right, thinking about like, okay, like housing, um. I've, I've been working on it this closely for the past three years in this community. I understand that not a lot of people have paid attention or have done that. So when we think about communications on contentious issues or easy issues or things like that, what, what is it that the board is. It is trying to share and that's been a, be annoying and go back to why the board's priorities are gonna be very important. Because if the board's priorities are housing for the community, then we can work on a whole host of comms things. You know, for you guys to reflect, edit, do on, or support you in your communications outwards and internally. Does that, does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, I'm looking at the whiteboard and it's sort of like there we can loosely talk about, you know, some of those things. Our, our priorities. Evolve constantly to fit the needs of the constantly evolving landscape around us though. So it's sort of like, if we start putting out these like, you know. Week one, yeah, I wanna make, know why the motocross track, you know, lease was so, was so convoluted. I wanna work on the animal shelter. Week four, it's like DHS, like we're in serious problems because of what's coming out of the, you know, the language coming out of the federal. So it's like, I'm, I'm. I feel like if we get lost in just trying to explain, this is what I wanna do next. And then we have to change gears because of something outside factors and, you know, change to something else. Well, more of what I want is like, I'm trying to remember who I was sitting in that chair before I came in here, and I wanna talk to that person.
Mm-hmm.
And explain to them. Things that help them understand what it's like sitting in this chair.
Mm-hmm.
And the things that are happening that no one hears about, like.
Mm-hmm.
The, the evolution of our finance department and how those things are changing the s- the structure and the, the.
Yes.
The accountability here and no one's hearing about that stuff.
That's, that's where I would love some clarification currently about this conversation we're having.
Mm-hmm.
I get that we're gonna talk about the board's, this tables, priorities next week. When are we talking about our communications priorities? Cause in my mind, those are two separate things. It's like, what are we working on? What change are we making in the community is our priorities? But then like. Communications tactics, I have different priorities. So like, are we talking about those right now?
Right, which.
Or what are we talking about?
When, when does Matt get a chance to tell? People who misunderstood him saying my, what I said I was gonna do in there is different from what I said I'm gonna, what I'm wanna do now because of what I've learned. And a lot of people didn't hear the what I've learned part. They just heard, oh, he's flip flopping already. You know, and like, he deserves a chance to be able to elaborate on these things. And I mean, this is just, you know, I'm trying to. Put myself in different shoes and different, you know, outside of this room and be like, you know. Elaborate a little more on what we had to say, so people aren't getting the wrong idea, so that we can more clearly communicate what we wanna tell people. Who can hear something we say in the meeting and, and run with it and like.
Yeah, I would love for you to draft something, right?
Okay.
Get your word salad out.
My word salad?
Yep.
Excellent.
Um, cause that's how we start and that's how we refine an idea. If your word salad is perfect first go around, then we're gonna talk to you about the best way to put that out there based on our experiences with our different channels. Um.
So I guess I'm, I'm confused on that, so um what is a communication priority?
For, well, for me, a communication priority would be actually saying like, admitting mistakes, vulnerability and accountability. I want that written in here to me. And then also like, I feel like if civic engagement is all over this document, like. If people don't understand the system that they're trying to engage with, they get really pissed and disenfranchised. So education in our comms is really important to me. Like if we're not education, educating people on what the board can do, what they can't do, and where their areas or their avenues of input are. They're just coming to, you know, community, whatever, what is that called? Public input, what is that called? Public comment. And they're just like, these bitches are shutting me out. They have to say, but we're just trying to follow the rules of the structure.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
That's, that's where disenfranchise happen, that happens, right? And people aren't gonna be civically engaged to help us with this beautiful path forward. If they don't understand what we're doing and why and what we're allowed to do. So to me, education is really important, that it's important to us.
Okay.
Yeah, so please.
And that does make, that makes sense to me, I guess, I'm, I could just mulling it over, right?
Yeah.
No one knows how their government works.
Right.
City, county, metro district.
Right.
State, whatever. Um so I mean, I think we can work on those educational and learning opportunities, uh. But to, I guess to one hand, and I, and I say that just in a broader context of just like where our country is, because you have people.
Yeah.
Um like our president who can say whatever they want. I can shoot someone on Fifth Avenue and I won't get arrested. It's not wrong.
Yeah.
Then you got people who are elected who can say whatever they want.
Mm-hmm.
Um and sling mud on the complete opposite end of the aisle and it doesn't matter. So when we talk about civics or civil discourse, like where. If that's something this board wants to take on, then I'd fully applaud and support that, but I, um.
But why, you're.
No, no, not, I'm not at why. I'm just as, as a person who has spent their career in public service, I'm like, I'm just a good luck.
Oh, okay. Yo, I get that, I get that we're working at a deficit.
Yes, yes, yeah, yeah.
I get that there is like an environment and. I get that there is like an environment and of like a system of education and and engagement with our governments that is working against us.
Mm-hmm.
But when it comes to my communication priorities, I if I can help one person understand the government better, that's of value to me.
Yeah, yeah.
To like build it into our system, so that's why I'm I'm, it's not about like a seat change.
I I start to wonder what's going on in your head when you get real quiet like that. What, wait, two cents?
I don't know, I just feel like we're making this harder than it needs to be. And like, I totally feel like you are valid in wanting to keep your voice, like you were elected also individually as a person. And that we should support you in creating opportunities for you all to meet with the community. I've sat in this room and it feels like communication with the community might actually be one of your priorities.
That too, yes.
Like as a board might be your priority.
Yeah.
And so like, is that, what do we need to do to facilitate that? Do we need to like, make sure that you have a spot in the in the, um, paper? Do we need to start setting up your monthly like town halls where we can plan for those, where you can verbally speak to the community, not just written written form? I don't know, um, I think there's there's a lot, in my mind, there's a little bit of a difference of like what the county's goals are and like how we put out information.
Mm-hmm.
And how you all let that out and we have to just figure out how we sync those because we are one and the same, but we are also very different. I don't know, is is that making sense to you?
No, that makes a lot of sense to me, um, and I think that that's also kind of what I'm feeling from y'all as well. So, learning is a big part of what Sammy and I were talking about. We really do wanna help build content at the appropriate level.
Yeah.
Because right now, we are putting it out up here and we are not meeting people where they're at.
Yes. Yeah.
So I always like to use the word learning, cause it's an active word. Um, and we wanna actively engage with folks versus teaching, educating, cause that's passive. Um, and that's one hundred percent educational speak and teacher speak. So we really wanna break down the budget book, because that tells what we do and it tells how we do it. It's just not in a palatable format for the average human being.
Mm-hmm.
I even think it's a little bit gross, but I actually like it a lot.
Mm-hmm.
So that's what we wanna look at, work at. So we can, this is really helpful feedback to reframe and reshape kind of where we are going, but make it directly aligned with what you all are thinking, cause that's what we wanna do, we wanna help present this story in the best way possible. And I want you to tell your story.
Right.
The way that you wanna tell it.
Yeah.
I just don't want you to say I'm a giant monkey head.
Is part of it getting, you know, you guys more information on like the transformation of finance, on the transformation of D H S, um, that kind of stuff, or?
That'd be an element, you know, we wanna be able to. I don't think, I think I think we wanna have a little bit looser parameters of like, we don't have to have this rigid report to the public every year, you know, like, but you know, like, eh, for me, how that would look is still really excited about the changes that are happening in the finance department. More accountability to how the county's spending their tax dollars. Anyone who wants to learn more about that, reach out, we'd be happy to share more about that with you, because we know it's a concern of the community.
Okay, where are you at, Commissioner Bullock?
I, uh, when I got a, when I was running, I said, I would write a little column in paper once a month. If I don't do that, I feel like I'm letting people down. I agree with Andy, it'd be really nice to have that come from my perspective and not as a board. Cause ultimately, we we are a board, but we're still elected officials. And one of us could be gone, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Like, they're not gonna vote for us as a board, they're gonna vote for us all individually, so. I would like to.
Programs, then maybe the first article or commissioner quarter be, um, you know, a thank you to the community, A. What it is to be an individual commissioner, what it is to be a board, providing that learning and educational opportunity. And then from there going, yeah, so maybe March all three, maybe March all three of you write something from your own perspectives, but the first one is like, hey, we got elected, or I don't know.
How about this, each one starts with a paragraph, that's kind of like what you just explained, and then we each get a paragraph below that. Did something short and sweet that we each wanted to communicate with the public about, you know, our own accountability, vulnerabilities. You know, things you wanna say, things I wanna say.
I like that, in our own words and also just proofread. While you guys just to make sure we're not saying something wrong. But also in our own words, like, hey man, you know, this is how I felt, this was my philosophy, this is reality.
Yeah.
And also I'd like to see, you know, my first one could be, you know, I had a total misconception about everybody in there and every, you guys all worked really hard, I'd like to say that. And I don't think that coming from comms, like, hey, we all worked really hard, that's not gonna be as effective.
Yeah.
As if Matt Bullock says, man, you know, just give us a little bit of time and also, you know, the deep state works really, really hard.
Perfect.
Please say that, Matt, I will give you five dollars if you say that.
So, you know, I would like to put that on the website, like to get that in the newspaper.
Yeah.
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 Especially Liz, she is particularly particular.
I like that, that's for a reason.
So the priorities are immaculate.
Um, and just so you guys are aware, so the deadline for getting something in the Herald is Monday, close of business to get in that Thursday's paper. Um.
And what does it cost, like if we, what if we each did like three paragraphs and then it was all down the side instead of.
So.
I I thought the paper would give you a. Quarter page raised for the first one to do it as a letter to the editor.
Yeah.
After that, we will be paying for that space.
And I'd like it to be not signed by all three of us, because I think.
No, it doesn't make sense unless the board is speaking.
Because of this.
There are like four, there are five entities who speak from the county. It is me, it is Andy, it is Matt, it is the board, and then it is the county. Like, and then you could even break down the county into all the different departments who have voices.
Yeah.
Like, we're not just talking about one voice, which I think is what you all are trying to tease out. It's like, where do all the voices come from, who is this comms plan for? What?
So where do all the voices come from was in my head, yeah.
In fact, the house.
Yeah, sorry, sorry.
I'm just trying to, I'm I'm, I agree, Matt, I I shouldn't sign something that's from either of you.
I'm pulling them down.
When the board is speaking, we should all agree on it.
What do you mean sign it, like?
And then we can sign it.
We're just putting your name to the bottom, right?
Like put our, say like this is my opinion, or this is coming from me versus coming from the board versus coming from the county.
So like, so us being grouped in a quarter page together, you you don't wanna be included with something, like I'm I'm misunderstanding, but.
No, no, no.
No, I understand the idea where we do it once a month, they're biweekly, but each of us takes a turn. That's your first one says, hey, man, this is what I've learned and this is what I was wrong about. Not so much like, uh, you know, this, but just a a personal, so people can read it and go, hey, man, I enjoyed you saying that and, uh, you know, not like laying out what we're gonna do, what our best practices are, but a real personal account, like, you know, sitting in this seat. It's been a real challenge, thanks for, you know, trusting me and, uh, I'm speaking as Matt Bullock and not as the caring commissioner.
I think that's a good, um, opportunity for a feedback mechanism to pair it with that too.
To what?
Like some, so putting in a Q R code or a link, some sort of feedback mechanism. I think those two pieces pair really nicely together. Um, yeah, so.
Can I pause for a second, I'm feeling a little confused. Um, help me understand what's about to happen with this in particular, Liz. You're ta- you're like listening to us talk right now and then you're going to listen to what our priorities are. And then you're going to redo this plan with that input or what happens?
I think. I think that's a very good option. So I think that you're, I think that what I'm pulling out as well, that this is the county's comms plan, but we wanna make sure that it aligns with all of you.
Yeah. Right.
We also wanna give you your autonomy and voice to create in other channels. If we are not hitting what you think the county's priorities should be for communication, that's we feedback reshape take home and bring back to you.
Great, and how's that feedback been received from me? Just wanna make sure.
I have no.
Okay, cool. I I was really unclear about like what, it feels like we're da- uh, digging down into the nitty gritty.
Mm-hmm.
But like, what are we actually going to do? And based on you asking us, well, what do you wanna talk about here? I didn't realize we were talking about actual strategies and what that was gonna look like and. So I'm feeling a little, um.
Yeah, I think.
I'm feeling a little off sync, where it's like, I don't understand the point of this meeting is where I'm at right now.
We were, started out as training, but somehow we got into the input and we dived really hard into that.
So I'm also relying on my experience with the pass board.
Okay.
And we are very priorities focused and that's how we communicated around it. That's how we built our stories about the county, that's how we shared our success, that's how we shared our progress. I'm also getting the feeling that y'all are not as interested in distilling to five priorities and that's the theme that we constantly repeat on. And that's okay, because this is a collaboration and this is a moment to figure out how we do this. I do think that we are gonna have independent comms plans, one for the county, what we're building there. And I think we're gonna have kind of a communication base for how y'all wanna do it as well. And that's perfectly fine.
Cool. I also hear from what I've heard from all of you, that like, from a day-to-day perspective, if we hear Laura come from D H S saying, we used to be in a really bad spot, we're in a much better spot now, these are our new numbers, or we're still way behind on SNAP applications, then maybe Tim or I need to stop to say, hey, this is a moment where we can be vulnerable to the community, if like we weren't there, we're needing to move forward. Would you like us to start talking about from a communication strategy, how we describe that to the community? Or, hey, we weren't there, we didn't get the road or the bridge done in the correct amount of time.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Hey, Matt, like, do you want us to stop and do something about that? Like, I think it also, from a communications perspective, it can't just be very rigid, it has to be each meeting. Do we need to communicate this in a specific way to the community and how would you like that done?
Yeah.
I don't know, if that's what, if that's what I'm hearing you each day, it's like, well, at least maybe use it, um.
Ripping up Lauren, like, you're right, that's, and that's largely how I think we were using comms, but we didn't have a background built base for the other content that we need to do as well.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I think that we're balancing those two sides of it, but building out the backend a little bit better.
Totally. Mm-hmm.
I'd also like to say that, you know, last board kind of was in, you know, they weren't in a good spot perception wise in the community and I would like to avoid that. They were accused of being aloof and distant and so part of writing that column was for people to be like, you know, look, he's got his email in there, he just emailing anymore. Cause we're also politicians, women like, you know, we have to think about our political futures and I have aspirations beyond this office. I'm kidding, gee.
What, you go as the president?
So, that's sarcastic.
I'll go for pres.
That's sarcastic.
Sorry, campaign flyers now, but I don't hear.
It's.
You know what I'm saying, look, we have to kind of shake some hands and kiss some babies and.
Yeah, but I think I, um.
And I keep saying the same thing, so, just get your father to shut me out, just tell him to stop.
I look just sort of, the board knows, I'm just so, and I see your frustration. Um, these meetings are extremely helpful for me, but that's just the way that I learn and I operate and I can get there from the board and individual commissioners. Then I mull it over and then I work with staff on things. I have no idea how your next manager's gonna.
She loves it.
I I, yeah, um, but these meetings are very, very important, especially when when we do go down rabbit holes, when we do stray from things or or the feedback of like, this isn't what I thought we were gonna do.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, cool, good to know.
I'm also trying to get better at that, I think I've, I got like a little sidelined last week when I didn't ask, like, who is running the meeting? What were the objectives of the meeting?
Right.
And, um, I'm trying to not have that happen anymore, cause I also don't wanna waste any of our time.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
And if we're gonna have, I wanna drive towards objectives and know when it's time for just problem solving or.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I wanna know when those times are.
And I I will say, um, as well for kind of what you were talking about, like the perception of the pass board. As you settle into your role, you will realize it, there are a lot of time constraints that you guys have, there's also a lot of flexibility you have. So I would suggest that you guys set office hours and like Mondays, eight to noon, Andy is always in his office. If the door's closed, a meeting with someone, knock, see if you're in there. Because there have been many a time, cause you probably noticed, Tim's always here. People come down the hallway like, I cannot believe my fucking commissioner is not in their office, do they even work? I'm like, would you like to complain? What's wrong?
Look at that, nobody, 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 oh, Tim's there.
Right, um, so I would suggest for you guys to just like ease into that or get into that. And it doesn't, you know, you're probably getting pushed back, like, you need to be there eight to five every day. It's not realistic, you guys are repping the county in Denver, you're going down to J F U, you're repping us regionally, you're doing all of these things, you're going to community meetings, all of that. But I would suggest you guys think about it, um, like, if you wanna meet with the commissioner, they're here on Wednesdays from whatever time.
We could post it on our doors.
Yes, I don't know, your doors, we can put it on the website, um, you know, talk about it in your commissioner corner, things of like, if you wanna talk, I will for sure be there this time of this time on these days.
Yeah, make the coffee.
Cause you, you know, you guys all have outside lives and outside businesses and outside interests and like, um.
Yeah, that's gonna be a big complaint, it always has been.
Yeah.
Remember that.
It's like a theater spirit.
Liz, did we, did you get out of this what you wanted from your work session with us?
Yeah.
What were your objectives for this meeting?
So mine was confirmation that county comms and our plans for how we're gonna tell our stories and the areas that we wanna focus are kind of in line with what you're thinking. I think they're close, I have some ideas to reshape this a little bit. But again, I thought there were one, but now I think it's two, two different ways to approach this and I think that that's really good. And by two, I mean three within that two. Okay. Cause that's how numbers work, right? And so, this is a relationship that is, has some objectives, that we do have some plans, but there is flexibility and there's an organic nature to it, because I want it to meet your needs and I want it to meet the county's needs, so.
Okay, so this, thank you thus far for what you've described to us about the county's communication strategy.
Yeah.
Let's further explore the commissioner's communication strategy and our goals for public outreach.
Yeah.
Um, and you know, we'll we'll, that's another conversation.
And while we're here, can I add one more to the.
Do it.
Let it run.
I feel like, um, I appreciate language accessibility, but I also feel like accessibility in general is important. And, yeah, in our comms plan in particular, and I don't mean like ADA accessibility, I mean like, um, approachability more. And so when I think, like, where is that, I'd love to see that kind of holistic value somewhere in here. Cause it's like, I love the new signs that are everywhere, I love that accessibility, but also like, um.
We.
Dark ass hallways and like signs everywhere, like it's not friendly to come in here.
The buyer.
Mm-hmm.
So like accessibility of the government is also a communication of whether we're open or not.
Well, I love my architect, cause that's a big jam of his for organizations.
No, for sure, but I'm I'm trying to save money in this conversation, not talking about architects.
No, but even even with, no, even with our our current space, but, um, I do, I do, I would, I agree with you.
Okay.
It is hard to be accessible to government, right? Whether you go into a building and you gotta go through a metal detector and like, yeah, looks so unfair, like, well, sorry, government officials get shot. That's, you know, so, you know, I think so, there's some of those things, right?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
But also not trying to be trite about that.
Yeah.
Um, I also think, you know, when we draft and do things like, I mean, our goal for most of our communication should be a fifth grade reading level or less.
Yes, yes.
I write at a highly technical pace sometimes and I know that and I'm like, okay, I gotta like check it because I know. How do, how do you take something highly technical and make it digestible and accessible?
Accessible, yes.
Yes, it's not, it, it's hard, um.
Language accessibility.
Well, language accessibility, it's content accessibility, um.
Content, yes. Visual accessibility, yeah, totally. Visual accessibility, yeah, totally.
All all of the above.
Just, if we're, if this is the time now, say those things.
Well, I mean, because, well, I mean, talk about the cultural shift we did with this. Because yes, it is law that we have to do this, but this is something that we have pushed into the organization of like, we are actually making, we do want to make Lake County government more accessible.
Right, right. Right.
Doesn't matter if you're blind, in a chair, uh, don't have a high reading level, whatever, we want Lake County government, we, the organization.
Yeah.
We want ourselves to be more accessible. Because I think sometimes people have the narrative of, right, you know, government doesn't know what they're doing or they're hiding things or all of that. And it's like, no, come on in, you got a question? Walk up to my window and ask, but anyway.
So physical space in place, I'm really interested in the idea of place making, it's not a space, because a space is something you go in and out of, but a place is something that gives you a feeling. I don't think we give people good feelings.
No.
Um, and you're right, the way that we physically present, ooh, and we have made little changes with the signs, we have some more signs coming in. You know, you, so also have a background in art history, so when you're like, I wanna put it in an art installation. That's gonna attract people here in a different way, creating a different type of accessibility.
Yeah.
And it's gonna change the way that people feel about the space in place. I feel really resource constrained to do that.
Right.
You know, Tim and I once upon a time really talked about reshaping and doing this room. I told you, I think this table's the shape of a coffin. Um, but then we had to take care of the annex instead because it was full of mold in the carpet, so that's where our money went for it.
Totally.
So interested in refreshing this space because it's gonna impact how people use it. You know, working in education, working in libraries, they are boring storage facilities for books, they're absolutely not. And you can use this space to become a place to impact how people engage.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
And if you miss a shit ton of money, I'm on it.
Yeah, yeah, I hear that, but as a value.
Are you referring to this space or this space?
Our whole complex.
Okay.
Uh, I think that we've done a lot of work in the annex to make it a different place. I think we've done a lot of work with DHS and human services to make it a different place.
Right.
So definitely vibing on that, feel it. As far as our social media, like I said, we now have the capacity to build out that backend because we were just responding on the front end. I wanna give us a personality.
Mm-hmm.
I really wanna lean into, you mentioned it, Gold does a good job, their website is also really good, but it's not a part of Lake County government. So ah, why is it not? Because we could benefit from that.
Mm-hmm.
The public library has really good social media, we could benefit from that. We're reporting on roads, we're reporting on snow, we need to change that. And you'll see within our comms plan, humanize storytelling, celebrating, and also with that is vulnerability.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and that's where we really wanna move into, and we are not in that space yet.
Yeah.
Uh, we will be, because everything is a yet, but that's also the partnership, building that rapport with the department directors. And then starting to get the content where we can tell that. So yes, that's the future.
I would say, I mean, you do have an opportunity with, you know, this building with the renovation, and I, I fully agree, it saves some money.
Yeah.
But in the summer, this place is the most welcoming place.
Mm-hmm.
On Main Street, with the tent.
The tent, the tent is huge.
The winter stands. Um, but you know, Jane being out there, but like that is where you see, I mean, you see people who are new and old utilizing the benches out front of the courthouse, having their conversations.
Laying in the grass.
Laying in the grass, going up to my window, um.
Awesome.
But you also, also this building is heavily used in the summer because we're one of the few places with public restrooms.
Hmm.
Mm-hmm.
And mostly ADA accessible bath bathrooms, but we're also like a nerve center of like where to go, what to do.
Mm-hmm.
Because for the longest time, I thought that these, um, like the bulletin boards were, like, I was like, what, that's so many flyers in this town? This town loves a good flyer.
Yeah.
And it's in it, it's a great information resource, so in the winter, yes, we are dark and dreary.
But Tim's right, capitalizing on that moment is when we reach new audiences, when we create new connections. Um, the public library story walk is like my favorite thing in the whole world.
Yeah.
So how can we take that idea and repurpose it?
Yeah, awesome.
Personally, I'm excited, professionally, I'm excited, we have a lot of work to do. I'm excited that we have one and a half people working on this, I'll call myself a half, we'll give Sammy the full time. Um, and so we have a lot we wanna do.
Is Sammy still here?
Sammy?
Hi, I'm here.
Uh, just in the last few minutes here, like, do you have any input, do you have anything you wanna chime in on?
Um, I think Liz has covered it, sorry, I'm not there, my dog had knee surgery like two days ago.
No, that's okay, you don't have to be physically present, I just wanna make sure we're not excluding you completely and, you know, just, do you have anything to chime in on?
Uh, no, I think this is, and you you guys both have covered it all and, um, offered some great feedback and great ideas to, you know, better the program. But, you know, the story that we're telling moving forward and, um, how we can work together to support you and support the community. Um, it's kind of like the ultimate goal here, so I think we're aligned on that. And yeah, I think we're both, me and Liz are both pretty excited to, um, you know, just evolve and and rebuild the relationship with the community.
Strengthen. So we have a relationship. So what I would like to suggest, so we wanna get, I do like the idea of the commissioner corner, and you know, Matt, you should honor what you say you're gonna do. So if we're looking in March, I wanna make sure that you get your deadlines, like Tim said, Monday, to get it out on the Thursday. So what are y'all kind of feeling as a timeline for that?
Maybe every two weeks and we we just take turns and then we just run the letter by each other and you guys.
Yep.
Not for changes, but just for insults, that's not true, or please don't say that.
What if you can weave in, like, I mean, no, um.
We can answer. Because I don't wanna. I don't think it's a surprise, if I'm saying something and it's gonna be super vague, it's not gonna be detail on, it's gonna be more like, I'm feeling this way, that's in my feelings, you know what I'm saying?
Exactly. How do you feel about the second week of March, or do you wanna go with the third week of March as your as your go date?
Second week of March works, it's a month.
Okay, so.
Do you guys like a template with a prompt, or do you just wanna do your own blank word document and go from there?
Do you wanna just practice a few, we could, you try it one and then we'll have a works, another work session?
No kidding.
I was thinking we could check in digitally, like email a group, you know, hey, here's what I was thinking, what do you think? That looks good, or make these changes, um.
Sure.
And I have more work to, on that note, I have more work to do, you guys okay with that email, I'm gonna send reply with criticism reactions. Okay.
Hey, so the dog park committee, um, meets here in two minutes.
Mm-hmm.
Hmm.
Um, so with that, let's aim for March ten.
Okay.
And then I'd like to circle back with you in March and really talk about what your communication goals are as an individual and as a board and how we can support that. Does that feel good?
Yeah.
Sure.
Fantastic.
Anything else, Christian? No, thank you.
Okay, it's four fifty-nine, February thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five, Thursday. We're going to end this work session, Lake County Board of County Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, everyone, that was productive.
Thank you.
And I feel like I somehow wasn't like.